Welcome to the Five Town CSD Regular School Board Meeting for Wednesday, May 28, 2025, here at the Bisbee Theater. We are going to call this meeting to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, are there three. The first one is to make a correction to Item 4B for the SEAL of Bili literacy. It should read Rose Fishman is listed as being recognized for Spanish when instead she should be recognized for French. Second adjustment, Item 4D Staff Recognition, Pyatt Lammer, counselor of 26 years. And the third item is to add an item after Item 5, which is our 10-minute recess for refreshments for a presentation on the Ireland-Scotland trip.
Okay. Are there any public comment on items not on the agenda? Hearing none. We will go to the agenda item that I think you're all here for, our recognition piece of the evening, although you're welcome to stay well into the evening for the rest of the agenda. I know you all have better things to do, maybe, or more interesting things to do. So without further ado, we can launch into the recognitions. First, we have our music program and the 2025 Dale Huff Upstanding Music Program Recognition.
So I don't know if I need a microphone, so I'm just gonna, there, no, I don't. Okay. So the first recognition, I'm probably gonna have some of our musicians in costume stand up. But this recognition is phenomenal representation of our program. So there is one performing arts program in each state that is selected for a K-12 school. We have the distinct honor of receiving the Dale Huff Memorial Scholarship Prize Award. I just want to read what was presented or shared at district, was it district reading?
No, it was all state.
All state. See, that's why my name is here. Thank you for that, Kim. So this is exactly what was read to our school in recognition of the award. It's my privilege to inform you that Camden Hills Regional High School and your SAP system, school community system, because it's K-12, have been selected for this year's award. I've heard from many music educators throughout the state of how wonderful the music and performing arts program is in their system. My father was a huge proponent of a system-like approach to performing arts education. It's becoming more and more difficult to provide that essential education with budgets the way they are and the emphasis on STEM education, which, in his opinion, he felt should be seen with the arts in there. You and your team are a shining example of the importance of performing arts education and its positive impact, not only on the creative development of your students, but their overall academic success. Well done, and thank you. And anyone that has heard our students perform, I would say, do you want to go to the band? Yes. The very first song, right from the beginning, goosebumps. It was phenomenal. I hope you come to our Performing Arts Night or our Fine Arts Night, which is tomorrow. So if we could have any of the students that are in our performing arts program, please stand up. I know that there are many of them. Yeah. Albert is welcoming the newest member of his family, so he was not able to be here tonight. And Mr. Roulette has many hats, and he's wearing the baseball hat. He's on his way home from coaching. So we are excited to recognize them at multiple different events, but the students are very deserving of the award as well.
Congratulations, everybody.
All right. All right. So I'm gonna start with our honor graduates. So there are going to be multiple opportunities for us to recognize the students, but tonight is about having a chance for the board to see all of our honor graduates in different representation of students throughout the school that are getting recognized for academic achievement, volunteer, civic service. So even though it feels very natural to look this way, when I say the student's name, I really want you to have an opportunity for the board to get to know all of you as well. So I'm gonna say your name, and then come on up, and I'm sure they're gonna ask some questions, because they're very curious about our senior class. So I'm gonna start with our sum cum laude individuals again. And I'm gonna say your name, come on up to the stage. Reyna Abess, River Bell, Tessa Burns, Kelsey Clayton, Harper Coburn, A.J. Collins, Charlie Conover, Bryce Curtis, Charlotte Delahy, Britta Denny, Anya Felton, Trey Freeman, Nora Galan, Natalie Gill, Tegwen Hurst, Mary Kinney, Abigail Colstrom, Miss John, Katie Kunkel, Corson Lanfear, Gemma Lasko Amundson, Hannah Lovett, Hayley Labandy, Harper Lilly, Winona Lincoln, Natalie Lindahl, Maggie Metzler, Patty Moss, Charlotte Nelson, Lucy O'Brien, Cam Pinchbeck, Emory Porter, Natalie, Matilda Schroeder, Joselyn Serry, Audrey Strong, Charlotte Thackeray, Maddie Tohanson, Piper Urie, Sally Benini, Veronica Waters, Miranda Erosus, and Leah Swacker. Let's say congratulations to the honor graduates. Yep. And we have two more honor graduates. The 2025 Camden Hills Regional High School valedictorian, Rose Tohanson. I hope Rose is good tonight. We do have multiple events that are going on tonight, so I'm glad that these students were able to make it to the board meeting. And then the 2025, plus 2025 salutatorian, Tula Bradley-Prindeville.
Thank you for being here tonight and for all you've accomplished at our high school. Maybe we'll go down the line and just, if you can introduce yourselves and let us know what you're planning to do post-graduation.
Awesome. My name is Tu... Can I just talk without the mic? Is that okay? My name is Tula, and my plan next year is to attend Dartmouth College in the fall.
I'm Hayley Labandy, and I'm going to be in college next year.
I'm Corson Lanfear, and I'm going to Penn State.
And if you know what you're gonna study, add that, too.
I'll add your title.
I'm the Slidest.
I'm Mary Kinney. I'm going to Savannah College of Art and Design for acting.
Wow.
I'm Tegwen Hurst. I'm taking a gap year and then going to Vodin for Russian mathematics and Chinese.
There's more to that, though, isn't there? Wow.
No, they should put an...
That's not enough.
It's really a long line, so.
I'm Charlotte Thackeray. I'm going to SL next year, and I'm undecided.
I'm Reyna Abess. I'm going to Lafayette College, and I also am undecided.
I'm Charlotte Delahy. I'm going to Middlebury College to study biology.
I'm Harper Coburn. I'm going to Providence College for psychology.
I like the talking microphone. I'm Tessa Burns.
I'm going to University of Maine-Orinno. I'm double majoring in math and education on the pre-med track.
I'm Kelsey Clayton, and I'm going to New York University for business.
I'm Abigail Colstrom, and I'm going to Gordon College for kinesiology.
I'm Gemma Lasko Amundson. I'm going to University of Maine-Orinno, studying biology on the pre-med show.
I'm Patty Moss. I'm going to the Miami University, and I'm studying nursing.
I'm Miranda Erosus, and I'm going to the University of Maine-Orinno to study business.
Very nice. Well, thank you again. Why don't, since you've been facing us, why don't you just do like one turn facing your families in case they want to take any pictures? And one final clap for everybody.
This is just the beginning of the celebration, by the way. We are going to be celebrating them for the next, well, actually, starting in a week. So, all right. Some of them will be coming back up, but one last round of applause for our honor graduates. They're not gonna ask these students what they're doing next year, because all of them are coming back as the junior class, our newest inductees, so we still will make sure they have an opportunity to maybe, I don't know if Marcus is gonna give them a question, but the next group of individuals, National Honor Society. So again, the same, same process. Maddie Anderson, Killian Babique, Oscar Barnes, Braden Beveridge, Tucker Baynart, Abigail Botley, Kaia Bornival, Amelia Constantine, Mason Contacos, Lila Daly, Gabrielle DiStefano. I'm gonna have, I'll say that better. I say her name three times. I'll work on that. Chloe Egan, Danielle, or Daniel Forcillo, Sophia Helmstetter. Uh-oh. No? Did I say that one wrong? No. Audrey Henninger, Carver Henninger, Fay Hildreth, Meg Caviss, Havana Christie, Ellen Kunkel, Sarin Lanfear. Sarin, come on down. Thealaka, Barlow Marshall, Evangeline Morneau, Savannah Myers, Rita Majorne, Majorne Morneau. I said that better when I was practicing. Anan Oxley, Ava Peace, Elsie Pinchbeck, Sophie Poply, Dominic Todd, Burke Sabatini, Lilian Shackelford, Olivia Smith, Lauren Spear, Jack Stevenson, Graham Sauten, Olive Van Hoek, Peyton Warrington, Daphne Waters, Simon Waters, Avery Weeks, Marguerite Warner, and Willa Yetman. Congratulations to the newest members of the National Honor Society.
My name's Savannah.
I'm Dominic.
I'm Sophia.
My name's Fay.
I'm Gabby.
I'm Peyton.
I'm Avery.
Well, congratulations. Do one of you want to share kind of what it takes to be recognized as a part of the National Honor Society? What did you have to do to accomplish this?
I think a big part of getting into NHS is if you've done a lot of community service, and that's a big one, and also being involved in clubs and having leadership roles and just being a really go-getter student and having good grades. So that's, I think, the overall purpose of NHS.
Great. Congrats.
Yeah. So the inductees recently had their ceremony, so again, we really appreciate you coming tonight and giving the board an opportunity to meet all of you. The National Technical Honor Society also had their recognition at MCSD. These students, so let's go at the top, actually, we're gonna go back a little bit. The honor graduates at graduation are going to wear the gold cord. The National Honor Society has a gold and blue cord this year. Thank you. I needed that encouragement. And then the National Technical Honor Society is wearing a gray stole. I'm rocking it. All right. So these individuals also got recognized at their respective school. Gabrielle DiStefano, Connor Howland, I'm saying that so wrong, I'm so sorry. Caleb Carr, Mabel Wright, Oliver Lee, Elias Hood, Kira Kay, and Peyton Lombardo. Woo, woo, woo! Okay.
I'm Gabby.
Nice. Well, congratulations. This is a well-deserved honor.
Technical Honor Society is similar to National Honor Society at the high school in terms of there's an academic threshold and students are invited to apply. It's not a requirement that just because you have a GPA of 93 or higher for either one of the National Honor Societies to apply. So these students are going above and beyond to demonstrate how they are giving back to their community through volunteering, in addition to the character that they show at their respective schools. These individuals, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about your program, which is really cool. I didn't say that, so it gave you a chance to share a little bit about what you do at MCSD.
And if you want to include any of your community service, that would be great to hear about, too.
I'm in medical science, so we focus on anatomy and physiology as well as medical terminology. I'm preparing to go into medical school in the future. And with NTHS this year, we helped raise money for AIO Food Country.
Us three students are all in the Outdoor Leadership Program, which is a two-year program. We're all in our first year. It's a program that covers a lot of the outdoor activities that you find in Maine, from rock climbing, sea kayaking, canoeing, fishing. It's all covered through a two-year program. And usually at the end, it all leads up to you getting your guides license to either rec, fishing, or sea kayaking.
That's great. Cool. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. Hold on. We're also gonna have, recognize some juniors with the next group. So many of you are familiar with the National Merit Scholarship Program. This is the first level of receiving notification. So students take the PSAT, their junior year, and then essentially, the 1.6 million students, they take the top individual, so the qualifying score changes from year to year. You're competing against the individuals that you're taking the exam with. And these four juniors have entered in with a qualifying exam score. So Charlotte McGreevy, Calder Miel, Laura Riordan, and Olive Walker.
And I'm Olive Sodan.
Well, thank you for joining us, and congratulations.
And good luck.
And good luck. We'll continue to update you on how they're doing in the competition, but they are entered into the national scholarship competition, so quite an accomplishment. We're very proud of them.
We are rooting for you.
We are rooting for them. If you're familiar or not familiar with the SEAL of Bili literacy, it is nationally recognized. These students have to test for specific components. They get to retest, but they have to demonstrate at a high enough level that they could be fluent in Spanish or French. We actually have students that study abroad using the SEAL of Bili literacy to allow them to study in that, in that non-native language. So we're gonna start with Spanish. Reyna Abess, Tula Bradley-Prindeville, Kelsey Clayton, Charlie Conover, Charlotte Delahy, Britta Denny, Arya Dahl, Anya Felton, Rose Fish, nope, sorry, Rose was French, Tegwen Hurst, Gerardo Martinez, Mark Maggie Metzler, Charlotte Thackeray, Sally Benini, and Leah Swacker. These are Spanish SEAL of Bili literacy. Congratulations. And now, well, this actually is pretty impressive, too. So our French SEAL of Bili literacy, Harper Lilly, Matilda Schroeder, Rose Fishman. If you didn't notice, this name is being said twice. It is a first at Camden Hills. Tegwen Hurst, Spanish and French. So congratulations to you. Do you want to show them your skills? Let's, let's see how you did on the test. Reyna's like, no, no, thank you.
We're not gonna put you on your language skills here. Congratulations. Nice to see so many familiar faces keep coming up, so.
These are the only students who are gonna clank during graduation. They get the medal, and so we're excited to be able to have all these students with their, it's not merch, your bling during graduation. So congratulations again to SEAL of Bili literacy. I don't know if there are any students for the Skills USA, but again, I'm gonna say all their names. Skills USA for MCSD, the top three students from each of the regions, so Region Eight for our MCSD, we have students performing in each of the categories. Then what happens is they compete against other schools, so we have our top three individuals, so bronze, silver, and gold. Gold is impressive. You're the number one student in your particular program. And then you compete on a national level. We are sending two students to Georgia this year, so Maine Skills USA award winners. Ian Hammond, Kira Kay, Declan Rogers, Gabby, Nadir, Lydia Gerner, Grace Westbrook, and Aiden Greeley. Come on down. So the gold winners would be Aiden and Grace. Aiden is gonna compete first aid CPR, and then Grace is going to compete for community service. It's part of a team of three, and she was partnered with students from other schools, which is one of the kind of beautiful traits of sending students to MCSD. They get to meet individuals from the island schools, Madomic and Oceanside. Grace is also the recipient of the MCSD Student of the Year, so pretty impressive with that award as well. So congratulations to those students, and we wish them well in Georgia, at least the two of them. So we're gonna give them a round of applause. All right, Charlotte, come on over. We got one more award, one more award. So individuals that we talked about at the beginning, so the honor graduates will be on the Wall of Honor. Individuals that received academic recognition will either get a cord or a stole or a medal at graduation. And Charlotte is our last student to receive the Wall of Honor recipient award. So this is an award that is chosen by our history department, and it is individuals that are given to our internal school community, so volunteering to support our program. But there's no doubt in my mind that Charlotte doesn't stay within the walls of Camden Hills Regional High School. It was rather impressive tonight to kind of listen to her resume that was being sent by her tennis coach. Tonight was to admit to people their senior games, and so we blocked out with the weather. But again, we really appreciate the fact that students are giving back to their community. Charlotte's receiving two endorsements, one for community service and one, our first ever, for leadership. So congratulations for the active citizenship award for Charlotte.
I think you should love her, since she's alone. I'm ready.
What was your SAT score today?
My SAT score today? Zero and one.
Good job.
Thank you. Team 5-0 undefeated regular season for the Camden Hills girls tennis team.
Very nice. And then what about being an active citizen? What, you know, can you talk a little bit about kind of, you know, what drives you and in terms of kind of like what this recognition means to you?
Sure. I recently actually wrote a reflection for one of my AP classes about what next, and I told a story about how my dad used to tell me a bedtime story every single night, and it would always end in how I would make the world a better place. And I've always had a commitment to helping others, and I like bringing joy to other people. That brings me joy. So I take on those leadership positions, and I spend a lot of time volunteering at MRC with Habitat for Humanity and NHS. I'm also the senior class president, so lots of time within my school community, but also outside.
Thanks, Charlotte. Hold on. It's not on the program, but it just feels very fitting with what we just talked about. So if you are also an individual that's gonna receive a white cord, so a white cord is community service. It's 100 hours. We do not require community service to graduate at Camden Hills. So these students have given up their time, they've made a commitment to supporting their community inside Camden Hills, but then the broader community. So if you're receiving a white cord for community service, I'd love for you to also stand up and be recognized for what you do at this school and beyond. Again, this is a remarkable class. It's the highest number of individuals giving back to the community with community service and leadership. So we're really proud of them and all they have come. So one more round of applause for our...
Thank you and congratulations again to everybody. We have a couple more recognitions to get through, and then we'll take a break for some refreshments and more celebration. The next item on our agenda is to recognize some board members who are departing and honor their years of service. First, I want to recognize Sarah Bradley-Prindeville, who is a board member of many years from Rockport. You've seen her daughter standing up here already many times tonight, and I just want to give... And I just want to give a big thanks on behalf of the board for Sarah's years of service on the board, her commitment to our schools and public education in this community. Sarah's also always a very thoughtful board member, asks the right questions, you know, really always thinking about how the decisions we make will impact kids and our educators. I also served on the curriculum committee for several years with Sarah, which she chaired, and really always did her homework, you know, was thoughtful with all of the questions. The curriculum committees are times where teachers come and talk about new courses that they want, or we review different curriculum or standards. And Sarah led that effort from the board perspective and really, you know, always with an eye of how we can be engaging our students to the best of their abilities, how we are supporting teachers with what they need to actually accomplish what they want to do with these courses. And again, you know, always doing the homework and really having really interesting conversations. It's why it continues to be my favorite committee. It might be the best committee in that thing. Sarah, you're always invited to continue coming to those meetings. And we're sad to see you go, but just a big thank you for all your years of service and for all you've done for our schools and students and educators in this district. So Sarah, come on down.
So weird seeing you out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Our other departing board member is our senior student representative, Kelsey Clayton. I think Ethan, you're up.
I guess so. So yeah, when I joined the board, it was a pretty nerve-wracking experience. I mean, I was kind of like confused on what I had to do and everything. But the first time that I walked in for my board interview, which I was like immensely nervous for, like Kelsey being there, I don't know why, but it was just like, it kind of like, just made me feel like so much less nervous than someone that I knew on the board. And she's continued that for the past years that I've served with her. She always made sure that I knew what I was doing at each meeting. She always, we have a group chat. She always made sure that everyone knew where they were going and that there was a meeting, or that we had a meeting at school with Maria. And she's also helped we all go to Mile on the Board, which is main youth leadership. And it's a pretty interesting experience. But Kelsey, every single day, I would text her on the group chat and she would always make sure that I had a positive perspective on it. And now it's kind of become a joke with Soren going this year. And you know, we have to like keep up that positive attitude. And she's continued to inspire me to like do things outside of school. She did Diego State last year and she recommended to me. And I was first a little bit like, I don't know if I want to do that because I already did Mile and it was a little bit weird. But she convinced me and now I'm doing Diego State on June 13th for five days. So just like, thank you for, you know, making this a great experience.
Kelsey, thank you so much for being a member of this board. And, you know, I always appreciate that you're never afraid to share what you're thinking about a certain issue. I know it can sometimes be intimidating when you have a bunch of, you know, adults here that you're on the board with. But again, as I said about Sarah, like your thoughtful perspective has been very welcome. So thank you.
Thank you.
One more round of applause. And now Jen, you are back up.
I do want to share something about Kelsey. Her first year on the board as a sophomore, it's a bit intimidating. And as Sarah can attest, sometimes the meetings go well past two hours. And so her first year, I don't know, maybe 10 words. It was, you know, it's nerve-wracking. It's hard. And then this past year, I mean, my heart just about exploded how proud I was. She was given a project. She was like on assignment. She had to go to a school. She had to research what they were doing. And then she had to come back and share the perspective. And just to hear her present, first of all, funny. She wasn't even really trying. She was just hilarious. But to hear the confidence in her voice and how much she had grown, it just reminds me of what this experience does for our students. And I have the pleasure of watching that growth. So I would just love to recognize her one more time for who she is as a leader and how she's representing our student body. So congratulations, Kelsey. A jammer for life. Last person, at least for me. Okay, I can do this. Like Madonna and Cher, Piatt needs no last name. He's simply Piatt. And he's been that singular presence in our school community for 26 years. There are people you work with, and then there are people who change the way you do the work. That's Piatt. He's been our goofy grown-up during Spirit Week chaos, our wise empath in Converse Sneakers. And let's be honest, when you think of the Windjammers, Piatt is at the top of the legendary educators. He has jammed through his work like no other. First as a school counselor, then as a director of counseling, then assistant principal, and eventually back to his roots as a counselor. Through every transition, most recently the college admissions upheaval. Although there have been many changes over the past 26 years, he met each moment with equal parts wit and wisdom. Always armed with the latest insight in a classic, "Did you know?" That made you feel better equipped and instantly at ease. But Piatt's brilliance wasn't just in what he knew. It was in how he shared it. He modeled courage and vulnerability, especially as he openly navigated his journey with Parkinson's. He reminded us that strength and struggle are not opposites. They walk hand in hand. That leadership doesn't always mean a microphone and a stage. Sometimes it looks like a 4:00 AM email full of resources you didn't know you needed, delivered with heart and a Piatt metaphor that brought clarity and smiles. He never met a rabbit hole he wouldn't dive into if it meant helping a student or a family. He's the guy that showed up, lunchbox in hand, decked out head to toe in humane gear, as usual, wearing that unmistakable smile. The one that told you that even on the hardest days, we've got this. Piatt is a voracious learner, a compass of kindness, and somehow both wildly playful and deeply grounded. As he steps into retirement, leaving not by choice, but with resilience and grace due to Parkinson's, we honor not just what he gave, but how he gave it. With heart, with humor, and with us. Piatt, you will be missed. Your presence will be missed. Your quiet leadership and your unmistakable heart. But your legacy, that's here to stay. Piatt, that's all I'm going to say. No lammert. Come on down.
That was a lot of amazing recognitions. We are going to take a 10-minute recess for some refreshments. You can head to the cafeteria and enjoy a sweet treat and have a conversation. And then you can enjoy your evening. And just one more round of applause for everybody we recognized tonight. Great. You're dismissed to the cafeteria.
And we're back. Hope everybody enjoyed their refreshments. We are going to move to our added agenda item for a presentation on the Ireland and Scotland trip. Who is doing that?
Well, that might have been somebody.
She's all set up there.
All right. We are ready for Ireland and Scotland.
I'm missing my kids.
Cut peaks are involved.
Well, I'll just, you want me to just start?
Yeah.
So, we went to this group of 25 students and four chaperones, went to Ireland and Scotland over April break. Don't worry, no rush. And we had a great trip. We're here to kind of show you, give you a little bit of overview of what we did. We don't have enough time to show you everything we did. We did so much. The kids learned a lot, lots and lots of history. I learned a lot, the chaperones learned a lot. It was a great experience, all in all. Even in the airport before we left, this group of kids were incredible. Even in the airport, we were delayed really late and we were hours in the airport. And they had so much fun in the airport. They met up with another EF group and they were just made friends instantly and were just laughing and having a great time. This is some of the pictures from the airport. So, they were ready. And so, we had amazing chaperones. Suzanne Aldridge Peacock, Rowena Madaluski, myself in the middle, and then Mark Wallace. And they were a stellar team. And we had a WhatsApp. So, each chaperone was in charge of a smaller group. And we got all the information out to the kids. We got to see their pictures, so some of them are on here. So, that was unique and fun for me to see how the kids were experiencing the trip. That's arriving in Reykjavik. And so, we went to Dublin. And then, we went to Dublin, Ireland, then Belfast, and then we took a ferry over to Karen Ryan in Scotland. And we went to Glasgow and Edinburgh. And then, so, I'm going to let the kids take over. They're not necessarily coordinated with a slideshow, but I'm just gonna, we're just gonna kind of scroll through them so you can see some of the pictures from our trip.
Great.
And first up, who wanted to go first? Peyton, you have something really prepared, so don't be shy.
Okay. I had the incredible privilege of attending the Scotland-Ireland trip this past April. When I got home, I said that the trip truly changed my life, and I think it really did. I think going and seeing a whole different part of the world was really, really special, and I made some memories that I think I'll have for the rest of my life. My favorite, some of my favorite parts were the ghost tour we took in Scotland and also just exploring the different streets in Ireland. I loved that part. And also getting to meet all the new people. And yeah, so thank you so much for letting us go.
Actually, Peyton made an impression on me because she was so excited. We went to the Epic Museum, which there's no pictures of that, but was really interesting history of ancestry in Ireland. And she was just like, she told me then, she's like, "I love Ireland." She said, "Maybe possibly go to school there someday or a semester abroad or something," right? So, I thought that was kind of cool.
My trip was pretty good overall. I had a bit of a rough, rough way there. But once I got there, it was really fun. It was really fun just to explore all the streets. There was so many, like art, there's so much art on the walls just randomly. I loved all the cathedrals and the stained glass. I think they were very interesting. I also think one of my favorite parts was we went on this road tour and the, like, person that was leading it, he talked about a bunch of his experiences as a child during the time of, was it the war? The troubles? And it was just like, it gave me a really good history of the area, and I think it was just a really fun trip. I would definitely go back and I think honestly, I would love to even just live there for like a year because it's just such an amazing, beautiful area. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty cool. We had different tour directors that were local to the different areas we went. And the, like, learning about the troubles in Northern Ireland, I thought I knew about it, though I learned a lot too because here's a person who went through it. He grew up in it. So, it was really powerful. And you will see, so this is the beginning of the Belfast slides, and they have murals. So, we did a murals tour. And the murals were so powerful, and I got into some great conversations with this guy. And it was, it was pretty amazing. And there's a wall that's 50 foot tall that separates the Protestants and the Catholics. And there is a graffiti wall that people from all over the world have come and signed. And they're talking about getting, bringing it down soon. So, these kids got to be part of this history that, you know, may get torn down. And it was really, really fun to watch them sign and be a part of history. So, that, that explains the next few photos. Anybody else? Haley Levangie?
Hi, I'm Haley. I'm a senior, and I'd like to talk about building up to the trip. So, it's my senior year, and I think it was sophomore year where the idea of the Scotland-Ireland trip came up. And I was like, I turned to my friends, Ari and Chloe, and I go, "Guys, we gotta do this as our senior trip." And so, we were like crossing our fingers because it wasn't going to fall through at first. And eventually, it did, and I signed up for it. But then, I ran into the issue of, "Oh, I have to pay for it, right? This is a big market cash." And so, I was fortunate enough to get a Bisbee Fund scholarship from the school to cover a big chunk of it. And I am beyond thankful for Camden and how they can provide this for us. Like, I, I know other schools aren't able to do that. So, I was so lucky because I aspire to be a world traveler, and I couldn't have done it without the resources that the school has. So, thank you.
This is Ari Adal, senior.
My goodness, there's so much to talk about for this trip. So, as an artist, this was definitely one of my bucket list items. I've always wanted to go to Scotland. I've always been fascinated with the history and just, there's so much to learn there. So, it was really, really amazing to be able to go to galleries and castles and do all of these tours and meet amazing, wonderful, new people throughout the way. The castles were great. It was just, it was a very, very cool opportunity that I'm beyond grateful to have had, especially going on with a couple of my friends. We decided to do it as our kind of last hurrah, if you will. And yeah, I'm just, I hope that a lot of other people get to experience something like this because it really does change your life and it does give you a lot of perspective as to what you want to do in your life and where you want to go. And, I mean, sometimes you get really caught up in your little corner in Maine and you forget that there's a whole world out there. And I was just very grateful to be able to experience a small part of that. So, thank you, guys.
Hi, I'm Sophia. I just want to say that this trip was probably one of the best experiences I've been on. It was really fun. I met new friends, got to experience new culture, and see so many amazing sights and experience like some history and stuff. It was very fun, and I'm very grateful that I was able to go on it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Hannah again. I wanted to say that we went with another school from Massachusetts. And I think that was also really helpful for the experience just because we got to get to meet people outside of our school area. And it's just like, it was like, it was more fun with like a bigger, diverse group of people, and I think it helped a lot, like getting to know people and just expanding, like, the people that we know and like friends and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm really glad she brought that up because I wasn't expecting another group. And I was a little nervous about that, but the, the way these kids socialized with the other group, I was really proud of them, and I was part of our school and our community. So, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity. It went to really good use and everybody enjoyed it. Everything went well. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing the experience. Glad you had a great time.
Do you have any questions?
Looks, look an amazing trip.
It really was.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have nominations and two second-year probationary contracts to approve. If anybody wants to move this.
I'll move their nominations.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Great. We have minutes for the approval of the May 7, 2025 CSD Regular School Board Meeting Minutes and approval of the May 12, 2025 CSD Public Budget Meeting Minutes.
Moved.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Great. We have one notification of resignation, Emily Saffianza, who was a senior teacher. For chairs report, just a couple of notes. The senior march through town is on Monday at 5:30, and then graduation on June 6 at 6:00 PM, although I think it's 5:59. And you have instructions in your inbox if you would like a ticket to that. We also, of course, have our votes on June 10, and then the reorganization meeting will be June 25 at 6:00 PM. So, I'll see you then. Item number 10, superintendent's report. Maria left a report in our packet. Obviously, she's not with us tonight because she is a grandma and enjoying her time with the new addition to the family. Student representatives' report. Bisbee trip presentations. Tell us all about it.
So, what TV do I connect to?
That's the, it's the RMS IT cart.
IT cart. Last week, on Thursday, we all went on our Bisbee trips, which was different for every So, every grade was given, I think, $40,000 to spend to create a day-long class trip. And each grade was to do something different, and it was all completely organized by student leaders. So, yeah. So, I am sophomore class president, so I was able to help plan our trip. And we were not allowed to go outside like a normal school day timeframe, so we had to stay more local. And we chose to go to the North Atlantic Gymnastics Academy, which is really fun because a lot of kids got to go and just like jump on trampolines. And another group went to the Breakwater. And then, we went to the Saltwater Fields Barn, which was awesome. We got a lot of fiasco to come, which was delicious. And we got a really good caterer, and we just had fun, had like photo booths and a lot of stuff to do outside. So, there's a photo of the barn and the class officers planning the trip. There's more photos. In the middle, the guy playing the piano, he is our secretary. And yeah, those are photos. That was our schedule. We left at around 9:15. All the kids, keep man a breakfast and men at the gym. Then, for about an hour and a half, you'd go and you'd either go to the gymnastics place or you would go to the Breakwater. Then, we all came to the barn and we had lunch, and we had appetizers and the best desserts. I had like so many K-Pops, K-Pops is delicious. And then, we all came back and we hung out in the gym, and then we got to leave. So, that was fun. And yeah, this is sophomore trip.
All right, so, I along with Maddie McCaffrey, Anaya Hudson, and Adela Brainerd planned the junior trip. And so, originally, I'll just like preface this, it was obstructed a little bit by the weather. It was pouring rain, felt like 30 degrees and 40 mile per hour winds. So, our Red Sox game, which was the main focus of our trip, got canceled like four hours before we're supposed to go, but we already expected that, so we had to plan around it really last minute. So, the first thing that we did, we all got to the school at around nine or 8:30. We left at nine, went to Kennebunk for like rest stop. And then, we went to Faneuil Hall in Quincy Market for lunch. And they basically just gave us 45 minutes here, and it was pretty fun, but because it was pouring rain and 40 mile per hour winds, every single person like in that vicinity was inside of Quincy Market. So, it was a little bit packed, but it was like a fun experience just to be with our class, just walking around and getting food. And then, from there, we walked to the aquarium, which was really fun. You can see actually, the only photos I have, I was taking for a bio project I was doing, so my teacher's name is in the corner. But we just walked around the aquarium. There was like really cool tanks that went all the way up with a spiral staircase around it. And people really liked the touch tank where you could touch the stingrays and sharks, the sea lions, which were outside, and the seals, which were also outside. And then, because we had a lot of extra time in the aquarium, because we had planned to be at a Red Sox game, they like kind of messed our planning around. Like, people didn't really need to be there for two more hours, so we went back to Faneuil Hall for a little while. We decided to walk around, and even though it was rainy and windy, I didn't stop. Like, a lot of us, we just kind of like went around to some of the stores. We walked on the streets in the pouring rain, and it was pretty fun. And then, we went to Bertucci's for dinner, which was just like an Italian restaurant in Medford. And then, we were back to the school around 10:30.
So, the seniors also went to Boston. That's a picture we took of the whole class at Topgolf, which was one of the two main events that we did that day. We did Topgolf and the aquarium. So, we all voted. We made, like, we made it kind of vote because we wanted everyone to enjoy it. So, the other options were like the White Mountains or Portland or Acadia. And everyone, well, not everyone, but most people wanted to go to Boston. And the other planners were Tessa Burns and Matilda Schroeder and myself. This was our itinerary. We left really early at 6:45. We had to be at school at 6:15, which was quite a shock for a lot of us. We stopped at Kennebunk at nine, and then, we arrived at Quincy Market for lunch at 11:00. And we were there for an hour before walking to the aquarium. And we stayed there for two hours and we did all the same things the juniors did. And we only saw them at the end, so we didn't overlap. But then, from the aquarium, we drove to Patriots Place in Foxborough, and we did some shopping and eating for an hour before heading to Topgolf. And then, we golfed for two hours and had dinner there, and we got back at 11:00. So, here are some pictures. This is Quincy Market where we had lunch and the aquarium. We really liked the penguins, the penguins, sorry. And, oh, we can move. And then, Topgolf was super fun. We were all like kind of nervous because of the rain, but they had these amazing heaters, which were like, it was like the sun. It was so hot and amazing, and it was like the best two hours, and we all really enjoyed that. And we had, it was like a fajita bar for dinner. It was really good. And yeah, do you have any questions for us?
Where is that Saltwater Barn?
It's in the top.
Nice, looks fun, yeah. Glad the rain didn't spoil anything.
Yeah, super fun.
Cool, well, thank you for sharing your experiences. Cool, well, thank you for sharing your experiences. Next up, administrative reports. Sean Carlson, our assistant superintendent.
So, I shared with you, as were required in both districts every spring, our tentative planning for how we're going to use our federal funds. Unlike in years past, we, at this point, do not know what our federal funding is going to be. So, you'll see the estimates that I put in are the same as last year's funding. And after that is sorted out at the federal level, we'll, we'll make much more specific plans. But I wanted to make sure that it was in the meeting minutes for tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Sean? Thank you. Next up, Jess Gates, our special education director.
Good evening. My report is in your packets. I just wanted to highlight a couple pieces of information for you. So, you'll note that our current student count of students who are receiving special education services is at 117 students, which is about 15.6% of the entire student body at the high school. This is well below the state average of 20.43%, so just something to note. And then, there's a graph kind of showing the decline in our numbers over the course of the year, which is a trend that we want to see as kids are responding to services and developing strategies and then kind of able to be successful and fly on their own. So, we're pretty much on par with dismissals as compared to last year. We had 14 dismissals. We have about that many this year. And then, not reflected on those numbers, but will be graduates. We have, last year, we had 23 graduates and we're anticipating 16 graduates this year. And then, 19 incoming resource students, six incoming Rising Tide students, and six plus 19, and three incoming life skills students. So, I would say our population is kind of holding steady at this point with a, you know, a few increases. And so, that's just for your information in general. And then, I just wanted to note that we did meet regarding caseloads with the resource team this afternoon. And it was just, I wanted to share that it was just such a positive conversation. Our case managers really know their kids and have formed really close relationships with their students and families. And so, talking about, you know, who is going to be assigned the incoming freshmen was actually a really great conversation. We were able to relive kind of our transition meetings, which were so positive. And people were really looking for best fit for kids in terms of services, you know, needs and personalities. And overall, it was really a great afternoon and I'm really excited about the support our, our children will be getting for next year. So, just wanted to note those things.
Great, thank you. Next up, Jen Curtis, our principal.
First want to highlight something that I'm very proud of before I go to my report. So, Seren, I don't believe you talked about this. Did you talk about the saltwater farm comment? Hmm, she left out a key point. So, I'm just here to augment her presentation, their presentation. So, all four groups, I'm just really proud of them, from students coming up with the ideas, doing surveys, having agency. As you can imagine, it was like herding cats for months, trying to figure out where they were going to eat, how long we were going to go on these trips. And so, the sophomore class did stay local and they went to a venue that normally hosts weddings. They did karaoke and cornhole and all kinds of different games. While they were singing karaoke, the owner of the venue came up, turned off the microphone and basically said to our entire group, over the four years that she has been running her business, she has never had a group of individuals, adults or youth, just be so remarkable in how they demonstrated maturity, they didn't act. She found it hard to believe that they were high schoolers. Not once were students trying to take out phones. They were just so engaged and enjoying, I think, what was the essence of it, which was to build community. So, I just want to shout out, our kids are remarkable. And every time I hear that, I feel like, yes, yes, I know that, but I appreciate the recognition. And to say that when she's been hosting multiple weddings for years feels really special. So, thank you to our leaders for making that happen. My board report, there was one piece, you know, again, as we report out through the year in terms of our action steps that we're completing as a school community. The one piece that we started in March, and we have now convened a couple times, is we are working on an audit of our existing substance use prevention strategies. And Maria recently shared that in her survey results, it demonstrated that there were parents that were concerned about what we were doing at Camden Hills. So, we really want to, to reinforce the fact that this was part of the strategic plan. It is something that we've been working on. And we're going to convene over the summer to develop a comprehensive plan around education. So, there's prevention, education, and then, which is our intervention, and then treatment. And we're going to really stay in our lane, which is the education element to the three prongs. But I really feel fortunate to have Katie Cronin and Nick Sutriglia. So, they're not only our social workers, but they're also licensed substance abuse counselors. So, they're our resident subject matter experts and we're leaning on them to kind of guide the process. But wanted to let you know that we're going to work on that and then share our, our comprehensive plan in the fall. Any questions? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have several end of year reports. They're all in your packets. And so, when we go through everybody, you do not have to recite everything that you wrote down in your notes to us, but if there's anything you want to highlight for the board, that would be appreciated. So, first up will be Chris, our facilities and transportation director.
Good evening, everyone. Your reports, as you mentioned, are in your packets. Just want to highlight a couple things. Over the course of this year, the facilities department has managed over 25 large-scale projects. Some of the highlight, highlighted items for the high school were victalik fittings, retrofitting, the industrial art swings, electrical upgrade, completing the paint, painting of the main entrance and all of the hallways off of it, new salad bar replacement and insulation in the kitchen, phase two of the paving project, the athletic fence repairs throughout the camp, throughout the campus, the tennis court renovation and repair, the wind turbine main generator and blade replacement, football goalpost installation, which will happen in June. The gym floor was re-sanded and repainted for the second time during the summer. Insulation of the newly donated fundraised gymnasium scoreboards and the cement repairs in the front. Some other highlights that's happened throughout the course of the year, some emergency repairs to the fire suppression system, the fire alarm system, the security system, and our most recent water main break in the athletics maintenance garage. Some project development work that we were working on throughout the course of the year and the summer that didn't happen, that a lot of effort was put into, was the Rising Tide building project, a new practice field, the, and the athletic field study, which is going to be in the facilities committee presentation that's coming up in two weeks. Some other projects that we're working on for this year are an exterior camera upgrade and the new interior renovation for Rising Tide. So, we're looking into putting the Rising Tide program offset of a library. Big shout out to our grounds crews, they're constantly navigating change throughout the course of the year. And our custodial crews, who are constantly challenged, challenged with staffing limitations and endless changes because the building's running seven days a week and they really do keep that building meticulous and clean. Does anybody have any questions?
That's a lot.
It is a lot. That's the condensed version.
Yeah, thank you to you and all of the staff. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, next up is Nick, our adult and community education director.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
All right, so I'll, I'll keep it pretty brief because you have this already, but since I wrote this like two weeks ago, we've had two more graduates, which is fantastic in adult ed. We've also had another student from Ecuador join our multilingual learner program and another student from Nepal. So, we have like 15 countries represented in our multilingual learner program. And I wanted to highlight, most of all, that there are 77 adult ed programs in Maine and we are the, the second largest enrichment program. So, we have had over 1,800 registrations so far this year of students taking enrichment classes with us. It's a huge program. It's really, really well received by the community and that's just a shout out to the great staff that I have working at the high school. So, that's all I've got for you unless you have questions.
Thank you. That's a great stat to know. Next up is Chris Walker Spencer, our business manager. Come on down.
Hi, everybody. So, I've obviously changed roles mid-year here. So, in this role, I actually haven't spent a ton of time with the CSD board prior to this, but I've spent a lot of time reporting out monthly to the SAD board in years past. And I, just as a quick aside, really appreciate being here and getting to see students who I started with, my first year as principal, right, fourth grade, third grade, second grade, making their way up and seeing all that our system does to help them grow into the people that they have become. So, I'm really appreciative of that. As far as my role goes, it can really be characterized by a lot of new learning, a whole lot of support from, from my colleagues and a whole lot of patience, honestly, from everyone as we've, as I have gotten settled into the role and, you know, successfully spit out a couple of budgets that, you know, the public budget meeting passed and hopefully the public will support in June at the vote. So, again, thanks for the support and we're off and running.
Well, thank you for diving into this role.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, next up, Maggie, our facilities and transportation assistant director.
Hello. As you know, the CSD actually has a bus of their own now.
Yeah.
And we have used it quite a bit this year on lots of trips. We have probably had close to about 700 trips this year and we've not had to outsource any of our trips at all this year, which is great. And BusRight is a great app that we have for the SAD. Unfortunately, Hope Appleton, Lincolnville doesn't has, have access to that for their busing, but the buses that transport Camden and Rockport kids, they do have access to that. So, any student who wants the app, we can give them the app so that they can see where the bus is along their route and things like that. So, that's always a good asset for them also. And on the facility side, we have brought in recycling for paper, plastic, glass and metal. Well, not paper. Well, paper will be coming in-house next year along with cardboard. We're, that way, we can do it cheaper.
Okay, cheaper is good. Thank you. Jeff Hart, our athletic director.
Well, good evening. Usually in the, this time of year, I'm coming forth with you with some news about our teams, how we did in this, in this season. We're just starting playoffs next week with, with tennis and everybody else is still finishing up. So, while graduation might be right around the corner for people, we're still, you know, going, going hard at all of our regular season events. And I've gotten really good at, I've had a lot of practice this year on how to reschedule games because we've had such good ones. But I think it was just a matter of Murphy's Law. We had a great fall and a great winter with that. And so, this spring has been definitely a challenge, but we're making do. I just would like to just say a couple of things about some people because we're only as good as the people that are, that are working here. And athletics gets a chance to meet up with a lot of different groups and a lot of different people. And we just have a tremendous administration. I love working with Jen and all of our assistant principals in the guidance department. I would just like to call out facilities, Chris Vannelli's been so great with getting everything done, transportation. You know, I think we, we're constantly sending stuff to Maggie, changing a bus time from 10:45 to 10:55, something like that, that she has to be involved with. You know, I have a great administrative assistant, Amy Clavett, our trainer, Amelia Pelletier, all the other people that go along with that, bus drivers, custodians, groundskeepers, booster groups, coaches and volunteers. We need all those people to make it work. And, you know, I'm just really proud of the product that we put out and proud of the people that I get a chance to work with. And overall, really, I want to say thank you to the board for everything that you support that we, that we try to, that we try to do. There's a lot of yes votes out there and I know it's really appreciated from everybody. And I know I say that as a, as a parent and as a athletic director and as a former coach. I really appreciate everything you guys do. So.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? I'm glad to, glad to answer them. Hope you get a chance to get out and watch some playoffs. Both our tennis teams will be the number one seed and I'm not saying that to call them out over anybody else, but we got a lot of good teams, but you do have to kind of mention them. They're, they're going to be the number one seeds and their playoffs start next week. So, it's right, right, like forefront of my mind, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, McCall Anderson, our food service director.
All right, hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for showing up. So, we have had a pretty good year and a pretty challenging year, as you can see in food service. We have had a lot of long-term medical leave. Not a lot of substitutes. I am the substitute. It's been a fun year. I was one out of three keynote speaker on a very interesting New England Dairy School Council a couple of weeks ago, where we were about 40 lunch ladies talking about Maine dairy, how we serve it. And we are the only district in New England who does bulk milk on all three school levels, elementary, middle and high school, which is pretty cool. So, we can talk a lot about that because it's one of my favorite things to talk about. Everything I say is in the report. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay.
And we can talk about turnips.
Turnips?
Moving forward, as Sean said, I don't know what food subsidies are going to happen next year. My crystal ball will tell me that's going to shift over to the state level and then our subsidies will most likely drop.
Yeah.
That's my.
Okay.
That's all you got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Colin. Come out from the curtain.
And switch the cameras at the same time.
There we go.
It's nice to see you all in person. Usually, I'm hearing you on the other end of the speakerphone. My report's in your packet, but I wanted to just highlight a couple of things while I was here in person this year. We have a number of device refreshes that we're going to be doing over the summer. So, we're in a regular cycle where we're replacing ninth grade devices. So, as new students come to the high school, they're receiving a new iPad that they will carry all four years of high school. In addition, we're also replacing all of our staff member laptops this year. So, it's a pretty busy summer for doing a device rollout. We were awarded a federal grant for both state and local agencies for cybersecurity and that has allowed us to do a couple of things. One is we have started to provide our staff with these UV key hard token devices. And what this does is when you sign into our system, you actually insert this into your computer and make sure that you are the person that you say they are. So often, what we're seeing now is that usernames and passwords, even when they're changed frequently, are being poached. They're easily poached or fished. And so, what we want to do is make sure that in addition to something that you know, you also have something that you and only you have before you authenticate to any of our systems. So, we're starting to roll that out to some of our highest, highest risk staff first and then eventually to all staff and to students over the summer. That grant also is going to pay for some security training that will be required of all of our staff come the fall. And lastly, we have two new communication platforms that we're bringing online. We piloted one of them at our elementary school this year. It's called Reach Might Teach. It's a platform for school staff and for high school students. It's also for students. And it allows for two-way communication, easier two-way communication between teachers at home, between teachers and students, students and teachers. And that can be over a messaging platform, like email, or text messages, or even phone calls that appear like they're coming from the school so that you don't have to worry about giving out home phone numbers. And I'm also really excited because this is a product that was developed right here in Maine, in Portland, and it has some great features that we're excited to be bringing to our K-12 population, pre-K-12, excuse me. And lastly, in Maria's report, she referenced that we are partnering with a company called Aptige on a new school website and mobile app platform. So my department is doing a lot of work, getting all of the necessary backend pieces to that working right now. We have weekly meetings with that company. And we are very aggressive about our desire to be ready in the first weeks of July. So there's going to be more that you will see when you visit www.pottens.net coming soon. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all. Thank you all for coming tonight and sharing everything that has been accomplished this school year. Quite impressive. Standing Committee Reports, Joint Curriculum, met May 8th, 2025, minutes attached. We have possible approval of technology standards and possible approval of applied academic standards and course descriptions, which the Curriculum Committee recommends that the board approves.
I'll make a motion that we approve them.
Okay, I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Perfect. Facilities will meet on June 9th, 2025, at 4:00 PM. This is a meeting that will focus on discussing organic versus non-organic field maintenance. My understanding is that there will be some experts invited to talk about this. And so the whole board is invited to attend that meeting. And there could be a possible decision at the June 25th reorganization meeting based on that, just so we can get ahead of things. But you should go to that if you are interested in the topic.
Where will it go? Initially in the Rose Hill Conference Room.
Yeah, I'm at the Rose Hill Conference Room. All right, Finance, met on May 7th, 2025, minutes attached, and met before the school board meeting this evening.
Okay. Our target is based on 24 of 26 payrolls through May 27th. The target right now is to have spent 92.3% of our budget, and we are at 84.7% of our budget, which excludes the board contingent save, which would bring it to 84.5%. Please note, the month is still in progress. It's not completed, which is also true for last year for comparison. Fiscal year 2024, same period a year ago, we had spent 85.2% of our budget. Fiscal year 23, two years ago, we had spent 86.3% of our budget. So we're on track, look good, and yeah.
Okay, thank you. Joint Personnel will meet on June 6th, 2025, at 4:00 PM. Joint Policy met on May 21st, 2025, minutes attached. And we have some first reads. There's a note here that because this is the last board meeting of the year, the board will consider removing the three policies below after only a first read.
And the policies, first of all, there's a student handbook, which just has changes from last year. And then the policy and the procedures for the cell phone, the new cellphone regulations at the high school. So I'm going to start by moving all of these as a first and second read. And then we'll see if there's any discussion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion?
I think it's important to note, Marcia, how that when the cellphone, the two policies were adopted, that we basically removed language that was going to be included as policy, basically hinging on whether something is appropriate for a board policy versus an administrative implementation strategy. I don't know how else to characterize it, but so a lot of the strike through in there is basically removed but put onto Jen's desk.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Fantastic. Board Advisory Committee Reports, MCST.
So that's where I was earlier today. We had their meeting, and they are a go with their entrepreneur adult ed program. It's going to be in their next mailing. They had a student survey that went out, and 148 students responded and with a rating of 94% or better. All of their metrics were, students felt safe, students felt they had the tools they needed to meet the demand of the industry. So many survey results that were fantastic for the school. And then they had their student recognition Thursday night at Althead Transportation Museum.
Cool. Thank you for sharing. School Advisory Committee Reports, District Sustainability Committee, met May 20th, 2025, minutes attached. Next up, Executive Session to Discuss a Personnel Matter, 1 MRS 4056A, Administrative Salary and Contract Recommendations. I move that we enter Executive Session to Discuss a Personnel Matter, 1 MRS 4056A.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Great.